Sandwich. So just for, for a couple of things we have to do to make sure this is all legal is one is John, can you hear what we're?
Yes, yes, I can. I can hear you perfectly.
All right, we can hear you as well. Also, if for any reason you are disconnected or can no longer participate, do you allow us to continue the meeting in your absence?
Yes, I do.
All right. So just again for you guys, um, since COVID and it actually was allowed before COVID is for remote and how we need to do open meetings and all that stuff. So anyway, that's just something for you guys. We're also recording it, I think. And so anyway, just FYI. So before we get kicked off this evening, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance that would be led by me to the US flag. The Texas pledge will be led by Director of Finance Mike Rogers and the invocation will be given by Daniel Booker. If you will rise with me and we will start with the pledge to the US flag.
I pledge the allegiance and flag of the United States of America and the new republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and tenuous justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, our allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
God, we thank you to this day. We thank you so much for this weather. Uh, we know we're blessed, but you didn't have to do that, but man, we appreciate it. Uh, we just thank you for the people here in this room, uh, for us deliberating up here and for those that are coming to speak tonight, we just pray that you just, uh, you be their words, you be their guidance, you be their wisdom and, uh, you help us to make the best decisions for all. God, we love you. We praise you and we thank you for your son on the cross. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Thank you. We'll call this meeting, um, the city council, um, Belton, Texas, uh, Tuesday, September ninth to order at five thirty-two. So we are called to order, um, the first item on this, um, on our, on our agenda is public comments. Uh, this is meant for anyone who wishes to speak for or against any item, really just any comments that you have, uh, for the public that on a non-agenda item. I noticed that there are 12 people that have signed up for an agenda item. What we will do is we will have those public comments coincide with that agenda item instead of before. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll hold the meeting, go through the items and then before we have deliberation, just for you guys that have signed up, I'll call you, uh, and so you'll get your cue, uh, but just let you know when we get to that item, uh, we will read the, we will read the agenda item and then we will call you before we have deliberations amongst the council. So the first person I have that signed up for a non-agenda item is Holly Johnson. If you don't mind coming up and giving us your name and address for the record, um, and then, uh, you've got three minutes.
Good evening, sir and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Holly Johnson, retired army. I am with the Purple Heart Society, uh, chapter eighteen seventy-six out of central Texas. And we are doing a fundraiser for our Purple Heart this year for in, in February two thousand twenty-six to twenty-first. And I would like to cordially invite your and your staff to the ball and I have a flyer and my card as well.
Thank you very much. You can give that with staff and they can, uh, distribute that to staff and as well as us. Thank you for, for that. Valid cause. All right. Any other, um, public comments to a non-agenda item? Yes, just come up and name an address for the record and then you've got three minutes.
War Sloughs thirty-four twenty-three, Spud Drive. City Council, Mr. Mayor, um, the Wheat Road Extension.
This is on a, that is, the Wheat Road is, uh, part of the agenda item on the, um, so that, that will be addressed at that item. So that's going to be the strategic plan, which addresses that. So I've got you, I've got you down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, we'll call you right back up here in this minute. Yes. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on a non-agenda item? All right. That being that, uh, we will move on to item three, which is appointment of the youth advisory commission and administer the oath of office. The oath of office will be, um, administered, uh, by Amy Casey and, um, let me see, I, I guess, uh, do I need to say anything more than that? You've got it? Uh, okay.
Thank you, Mary Council. Tonight I'm really excited to start our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Youth Advisory Commission. We are thirty members strong right now. And tonight I'm recommending these nine, it's a good looking group over here, these nine, uh, board members. And Ms. Anahita is going to be our recommendation for chair. We're going to let them introduce themselves. All right.
Um, good evening, board and chair. Uh, my name is Anahita Mulhotra. I am a senior at Belton High School. Um, at school, I am the president of our Business Professionals of America and National Honor Society Groups. And outside of that, I volunteer to help tutor, uh, in math and the SAT. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm a senior at Belton High School. My name is Claire Govea. I am very active in MCJ ROTC as a staff sergeant. I am very active also in Belton Parks and Rec as a volunteer and hopefully soon a member of events staff. I also volunteer at a women's ministry in my free time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council and mayor. My name is Malachi Santana. I'm a senior at Belton High School. I'm also the president of our Altrusa International Club, the historian for our HOSA, um, the public relations officer for our choir department and the chapter leader for our college board big future ambassadors.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jada Gage and I attend Belton High School and I am a sophomore. Um, I am in basketball, track, UIL, the Baylor Penn Society and Avid.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Alexandra Bowie and I'm a junior at Lake Belton High School. Um, at school I participate as president of our Business Professionals of America Club and I am the social media officer for our Altrusa International Club.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm a senior, my name is Jasmine Vong. I'm a senior at Lake Belton High School where I'm a debate captain. I participate in National Honor Society, our student council and I'm an officer in Business Professionals of America. And I'm a yearbook editor.
Good evening, council, mayor and council members. My name is Shreya Muni. I'm a junior at Lake Belton High School. And this year I am an officer in the Healthcare Professionals Healthcare Occupations of America Local Chapter and also an officer of our Altrusa Chapter. Thank you.
Uh, hello, mayor and council. Um, my name is London Preston and I am a sophomore at, uh, Belton High School. And I play, uh, football, yeah, mainly all sports.
Uh, my name is Matthew Bates. I'm a sophomore at Belton High School. Uh, I participate in football and I'm also on the track team.
I'm Amy Casey. I'm the city clerk for the city of Belton. It's my honor to get to administer the oath of office to each of you. So you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Where I say my name, you say your name. I, Amy Casey, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Youth Advisory Commission Member of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations.
All right. Just, uh, before you guys go, uh, thank you so much for your service. Um, this, uh, Youth Advisory Commission, uh, came about because of one of our former council members. Um, why can't I? I know, and she used to sit next to me and just, uh, flabbergasted sometimes. Anyway, but Marion went to a, uh, conference and found, uh, engaging with the youth and a, and a, and a proactive way to do it. And so she brought that idea back and we've been doing that now almost twenty-five years. And so it, 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 we've, I don't think we've gone back to see what they've done since they've been on Youth Advisory Commission. But you, you're the future leaders. And again, thank you for engaging in the process so early. We're excited to hear what your input. Do what? Oh yeah, we do need a motion to vote. All right. Well, all right. Well, I, I still get a congratulations. So before, so before I get away with myself, uh, but we'll go ahead and, uh, do the appointments. Uh, so do I, um, hear a motion to appoint these individuals to the Youth Advisory Commission?
So move.
Motion and a second? Any other discussion? I started the discussion a little early.
No, you're good. I, as a former Parks Board member and, um, I remember the, the night I got sworn in the council, y'all had a meeting just around the hall and you were my first council member engagement. Um, and as the most youthful member of the council, it's good to have more youth, youth joining us. So.
Watch it. Congratulations, you all. Great work.
All right. Yep. Yep. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Fun. Enjoy.
All right, item, items four through seven are our consent agenda. These items can be enacted by a single motion by the council. Um, and unless they want to remove one of the items for further discussion, um, I will read them and then, uh, the chair would entertain a motion, uh, upon reading these. The first item is, uh, adopting the minutes of previous meetings for August twenty-sixth, uh, city council workshop and the August twenty-sixth city council meeting. Uh, item five is approval of annual software and license fee to fees to title apologies in hundred and ten thousand seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Item six is authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement between the city of Belton and Belton Partners LLC for the upsizing of an eight inch line to a twelve inch from line, uh, from Amity School Road to the east side of I thirty-five. And item seven is authorizing the city manager to execute an amended professional services agreement with state-side right-of-way services for right-of-entry services and a second required appraisal review pertaining to the South Canal Reconstruction Project. Chair would entertain a motion. Unless you wish to remove it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items, items four through seven. Any other discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Item eight, consider an ordinance adopting the Belton Strategic Plan for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we table this to the end of the meeting. I'd like to make a motion to table it to the end of the meeting.
I'll say, we have a motion and a second to table this item to the end of the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Right. Um, item nine, uh, so item eight will be held after item thirteen. Um, item nine is consider an ordinance adopting the city of Belton fee and rate schedule for twenty twenty-six. Ms. Casey.
Sir. Two times in the past, um, there's a few fee changes, one being, uh, related to building permanents, um, making them match other cities in the area. Uh, and then just a few other longer changes throughout the schedule, not, um, significant.
And we've seen this on multiple meetings and have discussed it and had workshops. Any comments, questions, or the chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented. One second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the fee schedule as presented. Any other comments or questions? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Item ten, conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax year of twenty twenty-five proposed ad valorem tax rate of point five two two five per one hundred uh, of taxable value, which is effectively five point two percent increase in the tax rate. Mr. Rogers.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, tonight, um, we have to have a public hearing on our tax rate. Um, not seeing it over there, but I'm supposing that other people could. Chris? I don't want to hit the go button before. Thank you, sir. So when a, when a municipality proposes a tax rate that exceeds, uh, the no new revenue rate, we have to have a public hearing prior to adopting that rate. In, uh, August, city council proposed a tax rate of fifty-two twenty-five per one hundred dollars of taxable value. That's the same tax rate that exists today. Um, which means a person's, um, tax bill will be based upon whether it goes up or down will be based upon the values, the change in values that, um, were assigned by the appraisal district. That rate of, of fifty-two twenty-five is greater than a no new revenue rate of forty-nine sixty-five, but it's lower than the voter approval rate of fifty-three fourteen, which means we have to have this public hearing. So I want to show this to you quickly. Um, you've seen this before. Um, there's two rates here. The rate in pink, whoops, sorry. Let me go back. We started to go, we started again. So this is the rate we're talking about now at fifty-two twenty-five, brings in one point two, uh, million dollars in property taxes. If you looked at the no new revenue rate for comparison, you would see the, a very large, um, in our, in our increase of revenue increase, I guess is what I'm saying. It's still increasing, but it would be a lot less than our budget, um, if you decided to go no new revenue tonight. So I wanted to show you what others, others are doing, other taxing entities are doing. Um, some are, most are adopted. Um, we're still in a proposed status. But, um, Belton ISD did not increase their tax rate for twenty twenty-five um, at one dollar, one fourteen ninety-four. Bell County went down by three and a half percent. Um, just over a penny they decreased, three and a half percent, um, change from the twenty twenty-four. I just wanted to point out that last year they increased by three cents and now they're going down by one. So they had, that's maybe one of those reasons. We're here at fifty-two twenty-five, no change here. Um, some that I want to, uh, point out to you, city of Temple had a seven cent increase in their tax rate to sixty-nine ninety-nine. That's an eleven percent increase over twenty twenty-four. Seat of Colleen is increasing four cents from sixty-five to seventy cents, six point seven percent change from twenty twenty-four. Um, Harker Heights is still in a proposed status and I think they have a council meeting also tonight. Um, but their proposed rate is a two and a half cent increase over twenty twenty-four. So how do we look compared to the city of Temple? What's, we, we always like to compare, um, to them, our constituents would pay a tax rate, total tax rate of two dollars, just over two dollars compared to two dollars and thirty-eight cents per one hundred dollars if you lived in the city of Temple. So that's the point now that I'll cede to council and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Just for context, um, roughly twenty-five years ago, um, I think we were around sixty-nine to seventy cents. And we've gone from sixty-nine to seventy all the way. I think we're still at the low watermark. I think we've dropped pretty much significantly. And we used to be one of the highest municipalities and as you saw right there, first time, I think we're the lowest. I think our Heights had us beat last year. And then this year we're, we're, and so anyway, bang for the buck. So again, kudos to staff for allowing that to happen. Um, this is time for the public to have comments on the tax rate. Uh, if anyone wishes to speak in favor or against this item, this is the time to do so. A limit would be three minutes. Anyone who wishes to speak on the tax rate may do so at this time. There being no comments on the tax rate, we will close the public hearing and we will, uh, move to agenda item eleven. Agenda item eleven is to ratify the increase in to, uh, in total property tax revenues reported in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual budget for the city of, uh, Belton, Texas. That was what we just presented. So this is to ratify. So if the council has comments, questions, or the chair would entertain a motion.
I think being a rookie, you know, it was, it's good for me to having a chance to go back and look at all the past performance. And I really am impressed with Belton's financial position now. And how all the current council members have handled it through the years. If, if you look at our tax rate, um, from twenty nineteen to now, it has been a steady decline. Uh, you don't see that in many places, especially, you know, people that went through COVID. A lot of time, a lot of cities increased their tax rate. And Belton has really been a city where when they don't need the money, they lower the tax rate. When they do have things to pay for, they can raise it. But, um, you know, if we needed a, a new fire truck today, we might be looking to raise it, but, uh, we've already done the one point four million for that. And, um, but, but I do want to give kudos to the, to the non-rookies up here, uh, who've kept Belton very financially sound and been very fair and reasonable to our citizens. I, I, uh, I will say, I've heard, uh, I've gotten several emails, several comments about a no new revenue tax rate. And I will say that having gone through everything and when you look at our increases, uh, it's, it's just not reasonable this year. You know, if all you look at is our health insurance cost. Uh, we have, you know, a few employees that are dealing with some health issues and, uh, just that cost alone. Uh, this next year is going up two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And, and we want to do that. We want to take care of all our employees, all our city staff. Um, so I, I do think we can maintain the current rate and be fair to our citizens. And, uh, especially for the unknowns that we have coming up with I thirty-five and I fourteen. Because I really do feel like that's going to be one of the biggest challenges this city has seen in a very long time. Um, there's just a little bit of a fear of the unknown though. What we do know is it is going to strongly affect our sales tax and our businesses. Uh, especially those on I thirty-five, but it'll also affect others because of the lack of access to Belton. All that being said, I, I do feel like there is room to come down a little bit on the five two two five. Um, I did mention in one of the past city council meetings that I feel like there's one contract that could be redone to make it, um, increase from one fund to another, uh, the same cost of what one cent of tax revenue would be. Um, but that is the only, only change I would see make.
Thank you. Any other comments or?
Yeah, I'll piggyback on kudos to staff. I mean, I think we went no new revenue. Last two years, if it wasn't the second year, two years ago was, we were awfully close. Um, and so kudos to you guys for finding the staff we need, adding those staff and kudos for a budget this year on one less FDE than we had last year. So, uh, it speaks a lot when you guys are willing to, to put in the work and, and help us out and ultimately help the, the audience out. So.
Yeah, there comes.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback, I guess, on all of that, just to say thank you to the staff and, and to our citizens that, that gave input and to the councils before us, long before us, that have worked hard to reduce the tax rate over the years, even with increasing values in our home base. It's been, um, a good steward to lower the rate so that the tax burden remains as least as possible on, on our citizens and taxpayers, which we all are. Um, I think it's important to remember that the city of Belton is an employer as well. And we have two hundred folks that we want to make sure have good quality work environment and they're taken care of and it can provide for their families. And that's very important to me. And I believe that this rate allows us to meet those needs. It also aligns with what our citizens said were most important. If you look at the citizens, uh, citizen survey that we spent the last year doing, you know, the top, top four or five, uh, items were, uh, public safety, city streets and infrastructure and quality of life. And so I think that, that knowing what's important to our citizens, knowing what we're trying to do, that's very, very difficult, uh, to be a, to strike that balance and to take care of our people and not only our employees, but our citizens. I, I, I believe that what is very difficult and complex, this will protect us and move us forward in a positive manner for the next year.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree. Uh, as it has been every year, this year especially has been a, a rigorous, a thorough, inclusive and transparent process. I agree that this is the right tax rate, that it's as low as it can be. I would say, and it, it contains no new personnel. And that, you can't continue to do that forever. And, uh, you guys have done an amazing job of squeezing every penny until it squeals. But, uh, I believe we're the best, best value around. And I, I thank staff and I thank all council members for just all the rigor and that was put into this. I believe this is the right answer.
Uh, just briefly, I'll, I'll say that I think that we have a very conservative budget. We've for years had a very conservative budget. Uh, I think that we ask staff to do a lot with a little and they exceed our expectations all the time. And so I think that, uh, I think that, uh, as I've come through the budget and had multiple conversations in council meetings and, and with staff to, to, to look and see where we can squeeze and where we can stretch and that kind of stuff. It's, it's just, it's a really good budget that's very conservative and, and still allows us to, uh, help deliver the quality of life and the public safety and the infrastructure that's important to our citizens and to our community. So, uh, well done.
Yeah, I'll, uh, just finalize before we vote on it. Um, yeah, when I, I started, uh, working with the city and planning and zoning, um, the city manager was also the develop, head of development. So he ran, the city manager ran the meetings as well as the P and Z. And, uh, we were coming out of bankruptcy from the fifties, I believe. And, uh, had a lot of problems and still financially. And I think one of the largest bond issues that we had had was, had just recently happened in the eighties when Heritage Park was made, uh, was built. And Heritage Park, along with a good partnership with Belton Schools, um, created, uh, community field where people that went to Belton schools and, uh, went to Heritage Park to play baseball or whatever it was, felt they were part of the larger Belton community, even though they live in West Temple or Morgan's Point or Salata. And so we've done a good job, I think, with finances to be able to do those types of things, but, but keep the budget where it is. Um, it's ironic that the federal government needs a whole new department to get rid of departments in the Department of Government efficiencies. So they add staff in order to decrease staff. Um, our staff is maintained. I mean, it's probably world record. How many times a government entity decreases staff voluntarily? Uh, and so it's, it's good to see that we as a community continue to grow, but we grow well. And so again, thanks to the citizens that are here, also thanks to the staff that's made this possible. So again, I, I echo, I think there's always a tension to be made, um, between where we would like to be and where we are. Um, I think the council generally wants to squeeze that down. I think, uh, John would probably like to say something on this.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I'm going to try to sneak in here for a minute. And a really special thanks to, uh, Chris with the IT department for, uh, helping me get this set up. Uh, such an important meeting, uh, so important to me. Many of you have spent additional time with Mike and the finance department, uh, trying to figure out ways to, uh, lower our rate, uh, a little more, uh, health insurance expense, civil service step payment. Uh, our city has done so much with, uh, grants, uh, that we have stretched the dollar, uh, as far as we can. And I'm very, very comfortable with the, the tax rate. Uh, we'll continue to look at it year by year. Um, you know, we've done water sewer projects, reevaluated water rates, just done a tremendous amount of work, uh, to try to keep things affordable, affordable, uh, and provide the services to the citizens. And so again, I apologize for, uh, cutting in and out, uh, jumping around, bouncing on the back of a bus, but this was extremely important. I appreciate you moving it up. Um, and, uh, I do support the rate and think that we'll continue to work hard, uh, to keep that, uh, efficient, the cost of living down in our community and, and not have a lapse in, in services, um, that we provide to the citizens.
Thank you, John. Right. Seems like everybody's, uh, shared their opinions. Uh, chair would entertain a motion on item eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eleven as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the property tax revenue rate, uh, that was presented. Um,
Mayor, we're actually, this is ratification of the, of the, of the budget, revenue in the budget.
So, so we're not done?
We're, we'll knock that out real quick though.
Okay. Sorry.
So item eleven is increased total property taxes and item twelve is the, uh,
Yeah.
So do them together.
Real quick.
Oh, we'll do them together. Okay.
I do them together. Let's ratify.
Yeah, let's get that. That's where I was going. Okay, all in favor of ratifying that rate, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, item 12 is considering ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2026 annual budget of the city of Belton, Texas.
Good, good leading. Mayor Council presented the budget in in July. We held a public hearing and ratified the revenue in the in the fiscal year 26 budget tonight. As submitted, the budget includes total resources of $52,873,690 and expenditures of $47,915,770. The budget is ready for your approval tonight.
Right. Any comments or questions on the budget or the chair would entertain a motion?
I move that we adopt the 2026 annual budget.
Second, we have a motion in a second to adopt the budget for 2026. Any other comments?
We need a roll.
Okay, roll call. All right, so since Mayor Pro Tim is on the road, we'll go start with Mayor Pro Tim on the budget. Aye.
Councilmember Booker?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Vannion?
Aye.
Councilmember Pearson?
Aye.
Councilmember Covington?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Mayor Mayor Lee?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. That's item 12. Item 13 is the actual rate that supports the revenue in 11. So, all right, so item 13 is considering ordinance adopting the 2025 tax rate not to exceed 5225 for $100 taxable value. Any comments or questions on this? Chair would entertain a motion.
Yeah, there's special language for adoption. I mean, for the emotion to go down.
Yeah, there's a
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5225, which is effectively a 5.2% increase in the tax rate.
I hear a motion in a second to adopt the tax rate.
And this also needs to be a roll call.
Right. Again, since we have someone on the road, Mayor Pro Tim Holmes.
Councilmember Booker?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Vannion? Councilmember Pearson?
Aye.
Councilmember Covington?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Mayor Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Yeah. Well, I was Mayor Pro Tim before. Mayor Pro Tim, yeah, that's yeah, you do that role and you're always that role. Always the bride of May, never the bride. All right, so that's the that's all of the agenda items. Now we will pick up the table, the item. And so we just wanted to make sure that Mayor Pro Tim Holmes was able to vote on the tax rate in case he got cut off early. So item eight is considering ordinance adopting the Belton Strategic Plan for Fiscal Year 26 and 30. Before we go to public comments, anything from Sam, any any update on the strategic plan? That you'd wish to share?
Just to make a couple of comments. Certainly have some some slides if you want to go through those, but at this point, I just want to emphasize the fact that we've heard from a lot of a lot of citizens, certainly at the last meeting and and certainly in correspondence that we've received since that time. We do have a recommendation in the packet for you that reflects a need to amend our thoroughfare plan to reflect the street as a collector street. That's been a pending out of it as needs to be done. The language in the plan does anticipate doing that. We have a process outline. The process would go to the P and Z and city council, but all in all, with that reflected, we do recommend the council adopt the strategic plan in its entirety with those amendments that are identified.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions before we open the floor?
Just so I'm aware, when we make a motion, either which way, the amendments, we don't need to specifically call out amendments.
That's contained within the strategic plan on that plan sheet that identifies that initiative.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I'll share just a little context before we open it up and have the the public comments for this agenda item. So a couple of things, I I think number one, it's really good to be part of this process. Sometimes there's tension in things that we don't know or we can't control. And so we have a representative form of the government of government. And one of the things that I always struggled with, especially early when I was a rookie, is was I elected to represent and vote the way the citizens that elected me to vote? Or was I represented to represent them to vote the way I feel I should vote based on the knowledge that I have that they may or may not have? And there was a tension and sometimes I I I I was in Luke's spot and I voted, I wanted to vote against the tax rate. And it upset me and I wanted to and they were saying, ah, we really need a unanimous vote. We don't push that for this council. If someone wishes a dissenting vote, they're they're able to do that. That also being said, we're going through a process with Interstate 35 where they're looking at expanding it to 18 lanes, 18 to 20 lanes. I don't know what the final is, but it's in 20. We're at 20 lanes. When we started the project of a lake to lake road extension back in the 1990s, I-35 was roughly was two lanes. And I-35, the whole thing would shut down on a regular basis and we had no other north-south corridor. And so Tech Dot was working with us. They were actually looking at maybe making Penelope a one-way street and redoing the interchange of interstate, and this is before there was Interstate 14. So all of that being said, a lot of things in the thoroughfare in the local community have changed over the years. And because of that, and also working with Tech Dot and the Corps of Engineers, we realized that while Tech Dot wanted a north-south parallel to 35, that that the Corps of Engineers was not going to allow that to go through their park, which this original alignment allowed for that to go through the park. Also that it would allow for that traffic to funnel across the dam. And they also said in no uncertain terms, will they allow that to damage the dam? And so that being said, we started acquiring right-of-way on the south side along and you can look at the thoroughfare, you can actually look at a Google map and see an area where where that road was planned. Also, the area that you guys wish to discuss, where that was going to be an arterial. And so for for you guys, an arterial would be like Interstate, well, it like 317, Loop 121, a lot of those major roads where you have a lot of traffic that's that's flowing through. For context, I live on Loop 121, so I understand what that means. So as we're going through that, we realize there's less of a demand for a local arterial. But there's still demand for local streets. And so that's something that we, through your comments, we have worked with staff and staff is working on an update of a thoroughfare plan. So that's that is part of the strategic plan. We need a plan. And now let's take that plan and flow it down. And 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 some of you have pointed out rightly that the thoroughfare thoroughfare plan does not reflect what you're saying. Well, it doesn't because you start with a strategy and then you go to the tactical. And so we're going with strategy and then we'll start looking at the thoroughfare plan. And there may be more than one street that we need to look at, and this is an outdated plan. And so we will update that. And also typically, we have public comments and public input through boards and commissions, through public hearings at those boards and commissions. And so if anyone here wants to be any part of the process on anything like this, there are ways to get involved in boards and commissions and being part of those processes. And so we have opportunities for you, but I just wanted to give you that context. And finally, I I will say from our perspective, we've been working in good faith with Tech Dot on the Interstate 35 widening project. And in good faith, we have done what we felt was the right thing to do to represent our citizens and to talk to them. And we did not feel that Tech Dot was working in good faith with us. And so it's created tension between the city of Belton and Tech Dot because they sent out notices to property owners before they allowed us to go to those property owners to say, it's important that you're here. We don't want to tear down your building. We want you to stay. But they got those letters without us being there. So we we have been in your seat, right? Either personally or as an organization where we don't feel like we're being heard. And so I just want to let you know, while this is a public, these are public comments and we can't debate and discuss this. What you have said and what you will say is heard. It doesn't feel like it because of the process that we go through. It's a public meeting, but it's not a meeting of the public. And so it's it's hard to distinguish that. So I just wanted to give you guys that context. So you understand that you've got citizens sitting here that hear the citizens' comments. So I I just wanted to give that context before we open it up and then before we vote on the strategic plan. So I've just got these, these were numbered by Amy. So I was going to put them alphabetical order before I realized there was little red numbers on the thing. So I'm just going to start with number one.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm I'm sorry, could I?
Yes, please. Yeah, go ahead.
One clarification, as we vote on the strategic plan and the item that most people are here to speak about, am I correct that that is to further look at the design of the road? It is not approval of this road? Okay, so this is to get data so that we can make an informed decision.
Yeah, a couple items. Certainly, the plan amendment is important to allow us to proceed. The budget does include some funding for design, but that's really all we're talking about. And I think a lot of the questions have been asked, certainly would it be answered by the design aspect of the project? Again, taking it from an arterial to a collector and going through the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think in broader the design is is just the thoroughfare overall. And then if this road is one of those on there, so you know, there's still a lot of a lot of things to go between now and anything being done. But yet.
And I was just gonna say, as far as the public hearing goes, each person who wants to talk has three minutes. I'm going to be keeping time. When you have about 20 seconds left, I'll raise my hand. That'll be kind of your signal that it's probably time to wrap up. And then once you've reached the three minutes, I'll cut you off.
And I'll also say, if if you feel someone else has said what you wanted to say, you're you're welcome to say, hey, I support them. But you're also welcome to take the three minutes and say the exact same thing. I will say, in in a in a moment of candor that gets politicians voted out for being just real, if you all say the same thing and you say it louder or say it longer, we hear, we do hear. I will say, human nature is the louder it is and the longer it goes, the less you hear. And so I just, anyway, just FYI, we're humans, just like you. And so and we understand. So any other comments? All right, Dave's the timekeeper. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I I I might, but we'll discuss.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss after the, yeah, absolutely. This is just letting them before we have our
I'll hear from that first.
Okay. All right. Tracy Neal. A name and address for the record, even though you've written it down and just for the records, it allows us to make sure the minutes are correct.
And I'll start your time after you give your name and address.
Okay. I'm Dr. Tracy Neal, 3603 Richard King Court, Belton. When we moved to the area in September of 2021, we put a house under contract at 1801 Tahon Court, which is right adjacent to where that land was. And fortunately, a colleague of mine at the VA said, do you know there's a road plan back there? And I said, absolutely not. It looks like a green belt to me. So I made some calls. I talked to Mr. Listy and he said, there's a hundred-page Tech Dot document and we spent several million dollars on right-of-way. And I said, well, okay. And I canceled the contract on that home, rented a house in Temple for a year and a half because it was a terrible time to buy and ended up in the new part of Dawson Ranch, which is Dawson Ridge. We've been there for several years now. It was absolutely a no-go to live in a home that was going to have no green belt, that was going to have a big road behind it, whether it's a collector road or a main road, lake to lake, didn't matter. We definitely did not value that property anymore. It would have destroyed the whole serenity of it. This road is just not needed in our neighborhood. We don't need a collector road. We don't have a traffic problem in our neighborhood. A two, a million dollars to spend just on a feasibility plan is 2% of the budget of what we just talked about. That's huge. And then a $6.5 million bond. Again, for what? Just because the road's been on the books and the right-of-way was bought when there were just a few homes on Red Rock doesn't mean that now we need to move forward with it if it's not necessary. 121 is done. That's opened up a lot of roadway. It's it's alleviated a lot of congestion. And I just don't see the need to throw good money after bad just because the right-of-way was bought many, many years ago, thinking that this was going to be the thing to do. Tech Dot doesn't want to participate. Corps of Engineers doesn't want to participate. There's a pipeline that's supposed to be put in and it's not, it's not projected to even start till, I think, 2027. So why are we spending money and time on this right now? It's just not needed. If Belton City Council thought that this was important, there should have been a master plan. There should have been some community planning instead of letting Carruthers continue to build and build and build and build. And now we have a complete community. As of the end of last year, there's the building is done. We're in a nice, tight community. We don't have, you know, there's a few roads that do have increased traffic. And I understand that those roads, there's some some interest in those people, but put some speed bumps in if you think that that's what the issue is. Slow down the traffic on those couple of roads, Mystic Mountain, Twin Ridge, Eteria, just I just don't see the reason. I never set a stop line for a stop sign for more than a car or two, if that, in our neighborhood. We have a huge walking trail that people are very, we use a lot. Children traffic go back and forth all the time because there's no buses. So my question is, why? I'm going to say one more thing, Mr. Boucher, I'm sorry, I'm going to call you out. You live in our neighborhood. You live on Twin Ridge. That's one of the roads affected. And so I would wonder and ask if maybe abstaining from the vote because you're directly impacted if if you're not, if you could see yourself beyond.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just ask that. Thank you.
All right. Gary Neal. Based on the last name and the address, I'm assuming there's a connection.
I am, and I'm going to make it short. She handled most of what I was going to say. Gary Neal, 3603 Richard King Court. You know, I guess I'd wrap it up with just a few questions. Our first statement about it is when this road was designed, I think it was ill-conceived from the beginning. You got 121, as she stated, that acts more as a bypass or a something to alleviate traffic off of I-35. This lake-to-lake connector, and now you call it a road in the in the neighborhood, would do nothing to help that. It would dump out on Red Rock, which then turns it into a residential street that would go to Lake slash 439. When people try to exit that, if they were making a left turn to head west on 439, they're going to have to cross two lanes of traffic at a moderately high-speed road, 45 miles an hour, with a relatively blind, low-visibility curve around it. I mean, so I don't understand your, I think you're going to increase a risk of accidents trying to enter that road for no apparent reason. The traffic going through the neighborhood would put pedestrians at risk at high periods of time because people would tend to want to try and use that to avoid the traffic on Sparta around the the schools that drop off and pickup time, which is the exact time when all the kids are walking through our neighborhood, trying to get to school. And the final thing I'd just say is, you know, what was the goal of the connector road? What's the net benefit of this goal? Do we achieve it? And the cost-benefit analysis, you talked about, you know, things in the budget. And I think this is a very fiscally responsible community, and I applaud that. But if you want to find $6.5 million to put back in the budget, get rid of this. Just because you thought you had to do it in the beginning, doesn't mean you have to do it now, even if it's been budgeted for. reallocate the funds. Put it back to something you think is is more beneficial. You're not going to help the general public of Belton community by putting in this fee route. And you're going to cause issues with the community itself. So I just don't understand what we're really trying to do here. It seems to have no net benefit to the city of Belton, which is what really y'all are supposed to be trying to to represent. And, you know, Representative Booker, I mean, I understand that. And like she said, I I don't want to say call you out. It's not calling you out. I you have every right to express your opinion and do all those things as a citizen and all that. But I just would hope that we could make it to where you're representing the city as opposed to a personal interest because of being on Twin Ridge. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, person number three, Morris Welch.
Thanks for waiting. Yes, sir. Morris Welch, 3423 Espada Drive, retired commander, Major, United States Army. City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service. I see in Jesus's own example in biblical verses like Isaiah 3015, repentance rests for salvation and quietness and trust is your strength. And Mark 631 through 632, come with me to yourselves in a quiet place and get some rest. While withdrawing from life's constant busyness, we can hear God's still small voice. Find strength, gain perspective and be refreshed for the day ahead. To cultivate this, we should intentionally create a private, quiet place at and time, free from distractions, to simply be present with God through prayer, scripture, quiet reflection. Home, just as a shepherd leads sheep besides still waters and quiet places, offers spiritual restoration, refreshing our minds, hearts and bodies. It restores weary spirits. It creates a pathway to receiving comfort, joy and peace that surpasses understanding. This project threatens our quiet place for people to refresh their spirits, minds, hearts and bodies. This road threatens children playing outside, people walking, dogs and running or biking with the increased traffic and strangers added to our neighborhood. It destroys the irreplaceable natural habitat of trees and brush and the sound of wind and the animals and insect life that live in its path. It adds commercial It adds commercial and industrial elements to our environment, which increases stress and causes health issues, uh, induced by noise, light and air pollution. It reduces the appeal of the neighborhood. Wheat Road Extension attacks the serenity, everything, every home it touches. The stress and aggravation on those families will increase and their quiet place will suffer. Strangers will drive the new, uh, road, increasing the risk of dangerous driving and criminal activity. My neighbors and I enjoy a similar quiet place behind our own, up in Espada. We feel the distress that our Wheat Road Project neighbors feel. It takes a village, as the saying goes, and our village is being threatened by the Wheat Road Project. This makes us anxious and worried. We don't see the benefit or justification for this project. I love my daily walks with my dog Max, meeting my neighbors, reflecting on the day, running, seeing children play. I love the current peace, the quiet, security and safety that our neighborhood provides. This street project begins a trend that changes our neighborhood for the worse. Please prayerfully reconsider the consequences of the decision to install this road through our neighborhood that we love, our quiet place. I pray you redirect your efforts to more pressing needs, such as the improving downtown, downtown neighborhoods, the safety of FM four thirty nine Lake Road and Sparta Road through the and to the Belton City Limits and add the funds to the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget, as others have mentioned. Thank you and may God smile on your decision.
Thank you. Right. Beverly Siming. Siming, sorry.
Beverly Siming, thirty four twenty seven Espada Drive. Uh, thank you to Sam Listy and Matt Bates for meeting my husband and I and providing the history of the Wheat Road Extension. Apparently, the street has been planned for at least fifteen plus years. Unfortunately, the vast majority of homeowners in Dawson Ranch had no knowledge of this planned street. It was not disclosed during the purchase process or at closing. I know you're going to say that's not your fault. My point is that we didn't know about it. We weren't expecting it and have obviously gotten along quite well without it. The scope of the, of the street has significantly changed due to Tech Dot and COE Corps of Engineers refusing to allow access and connectivity to FM twenty two seventy one. My question is, why would you force a plan that has degraded in scope onto a subdivision that never wanted it and still doesn't want it? The street will dramatically alter the landscape in a negative way. It will split the neighborhood, much like a railroad track splits a community. It will cause unnecessary safety issues for pedestrians, bikers and autos by adding a major intersection to the major entrance and exit of the neighborhood. The inability to exit safely onto FM four thirty nine from Red Rock Drive will generate additional traffic on Chisholm Trail, looking for a safer access to four thirty nine. Again, more traffic causing more safety issues. The construction of the road will literally place the street in front of and behind homes on the following streets. Mystic Mountain, Presidio Circle, Daleon Circle, Bermuda Court, South Fork Circle, West Matador Cove and part of Amber Forest Trail. In my opinion, that is a homeowner's worst nightmare and will result in negative home values. Even though the planned width of the road is reduced to two lanes, the construction process will destroy the maj- majority of the majestic trees in the right of way. The loss of a hundred-year-old live oak is something that cannot be recovered for three generations. Because live oaks are evergreen, they photosynthesize year-round. They help mitigate urban heat islands by providing shade and cooling through transpiration. They improve air quality by absorbing airborne pollutants like black carbon, soot. And reduce water pollutants by filtering soil contaminants. If someone suggested destroying the live oaks around the Belton Courthouse for a sidewalk, all hell would break loose. I'm struggling to find a positive side to such a negative issue. Therefore, in the interest of safety, climate and wasted taxpayer dollars, I compel the council to table the Wheat Road Extension indefinitely.
Thank you. Kathy Kirsch.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kirsch. I live at two nine three zero Presidio Circle. Um, so our house would be, um, directly affected by this. Um, one of the selling points of our home that we bought three years ago was the beautiful, um, trees behind us. There was no homes. That was not disclosed to us that there was a possibility of a road being, uh, put in. So that was kind of a shock to us after we purchased the house. Um, we love the trees. We would love, there's a walking path that goes right there while you, while Turia, that we would love to, if you needed to do something with that land, to even just extend the walking path would be my, my opinion. So, um, anyway, I think the Mystic Mountain Road is sufficient. I don't think there's any need to change that. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nicholas Polka.
Uh, good afternoon, Nicholas Polka, three one one six Ingram Circle. All right, I'm here to speak, uh, against initiative of the strategic plan noted as designed the Wheat Road Extension. I agree, I was starting to say, I agree with everybody that spoke ahead of me. That was, uh, much better than what I could have said myself, so I appreciate, um, all those individuals speaking up. Um, if we are to have to move forward with this, I'm here to specifically speak, uh, to the recommendation for a feasibility study instead of a funding a complete design. If you insist on moving forward with this outdated initiative, funding a feasibility study first should be considered instead of funding a complete design. We request the study, uh, we request the study to include traffic study with the access points, volumes, current and predicted traffic counts, accident history, traffic control means and impact to the existing development. And environmental study to include baseline conditions, environmental consequences of air, water, land, wildlife, noise and light pollution. Uh, and error in any irreversible impacts. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Linda Miller.
My name is Linda Miller. I'm at three three zero five Daleon Circle. Um, I'm here to speak specifically against, uh, creating the access paths for crime. Uh, the Dawson Ranch and Red Rock areas benefit from a low crime rate. The streets that border, uh, side fences are high traffic for pedestrian and vehicle traffic because they are the main streets through our subdivision. Streets that run in, in front of houses, which are primed for porch pirates, are also visible to the neighbors. We can all kind of see our neighborhood from where we live. Uh, we're quick to document suspect vehicles and pedestrians. If you get on the Facebook page, it's like, hey, somebody's out soliciting, somebody's out ringing doorbells. We all hear about it. Many homes have cameras and can witness trespassers. Creating roadways behind our homes creates easy access for criminals to get into our backyards. It disperses the watchful eyes of our neighbors. It creates basically a big, long alleyway. Because all of it will be backyards. And this is where criminals can quickly, uh, navigate fences, making off with our belongings and maybe even some of our pets. It creates pathways to bring crime into our backyards of dozens of homes and takes the safety and comfort away. In addition, the intersection of Red Rock and Lake is already a limited vision area traveling south on Lake. Pushing more traffic through Red Rock will only increase the risk of accidents. The Dunn's Canyon Light is only point one three miles away, making it closer than any other stoplights in the, in the city. Even if they put, even the lights between, uh, MLK and Mary Harden Baylor on six are point one seven miles apart. So I don't think that we're gonna be getting any lights, uh, at Red Rock. In addition, it was mentioned that Belton has no traffic light division. So Texas DOT would have to approve and install a light at Red Rock. This seems unlikely based on the proximity of the lights to the north and south along Lake. And if you've ever traveled that area, it is a very blind intersection of people coming out from Red Rock. It dips and it curves and it's hard to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Lewd. Apologize if I mispronounce.
I'm actually Donna Luna.
Luna.
Thirty three oh three Daleon Circle. Uh, thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to speak on this. I, I am specifically speaking about, uh, re- to request design considerations. If you, uh, move forward on this with funding the design, we request that it includes mitigation measures for drainage, mitigation measures for noise, mitigation measures for preventing pedestrian and vehicular access to yards that are directly adjacent to the new road and paths. Um, included in this should be the replacement of any fencing. That should not be the responsibility of the residents or certainly the, uh, HOA. Environmental management plan to, uh, plans to address displaced wildlife that would cause a danger from them running out in front and being a hazard to vehicles. Low pollution lighting that avoids illumination to the people's houses, um, and their yards from that new road. Avoid using anything, uh, any kind of traffic control that would add noise. Speed bumps, lights, those are, would all be available, uh, visible in, excuse me, visible from adjacent, um, residences. And then, um, impervious surface mitigation with pervious surfaces instead of paved medians with native landscaping. The Sparta roundabout is a vast amount of impervious surface and grass. And it should serve as an example of perhaps what not to do. Once you turn a green belt into a concrete jungle, it's gone forever. One other thing I'd like to address is perhaps a different way of thinking. It's, this is always, this is the way it's been for the last twenty years. We've had this planned for the last twenty years. This subdivision has grown immensely. And as our city council, residents trust you to be financially, fiscally responsible with spending. And we also expect to be aware of the city's evolving needs. We realize this. The design is predicted to cost a million dollars. Construction costs are predicted at this time, five to six million. Council members and staff have reiterated that the road needs to be designed because that's the way it's been for twenty years. That's what our plan has been for twenty years. There's no, it doesn't seem to be any founded reason for bringing a street through a subdivision that's well-established. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I thank you for your service of, uh, provi- providing your, your counsel to the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Right. Darcelle Grounds. I'm sorry if I didn't say that right. Okay, I've got it good.
Come into meetings. I got to sit on your strategic plan meeting and I did, I had just moved here and I didn't know what a wheat road extension is, but I trust you all. I've told people, I think that you do a great job fiscally and, uh, building a better Belton. I fled from New Braunfels. It is awful. And they kept building more and more streets, so it floods every time it rains worse than it did. But, uh, I trust you all. I'm trying to use the hop system as an aging female and, uh, had a great time the other day, went off to Colleen. And also buy our fire chief a new water truck. That's all I have.
Address. Darcelle, Darcelle, address. Oh, yeah, your address for the records.
Portuguese Court, Belton, and I really do. I have had a pleasure coming to the city council meetings every other Tuesday.
And I, I will say, she joined us at our, we had a retreat in Salado as we were talking about that. And she joined us as we were having breakfast and sat there and it was, um, I, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think she had one opinion, uh, when she came in. And she had probably a different opinion when she left, when she actually got to hear, uh, us discuss a lot of this. So anyway, thank you for being involved again, and, and hey, just wanted to s- to comment on that and, and encourage all of you guys to continue to do that. But we're not done. We've got ten, eleven and twelve. Uh, item ten or person ten is Chip Kirsch.
I'm withdrawn.
Okay, we'll just. Ditto. All right, ditto. All right, we got ditto from Chip. Thank you, Chip. Awesome. Uh, Taryn Burnett.
Taryn Burnett. Two nine three five Mystic Mountain Lane. I'm here specifically to speak about the Brazos River Authority Pipeline impacts. But before I say that, I want to say thank you all for sticking through this. Um, I joked that I would bring snacks if we had at least ten people speak.
Where are they?
I did not know we were gonna have ten, so I apologize. I will bring snacks the next council meeting.
Thank you.
You can put that in the minute.
Get with Amy. She helped me make snacks, so.
I'm gonna add twenty seconds to your time.
Just a side note, we're end of the budget year and there's no snacks. They have nothing.
I, I know hangry is a real thing and I do appreciate that, let's see, I think you said I'm number eleven.
Number eleven. Man, legitimately, I want to start your time over because that kind of got off the rails. Go ahead.
I agree with everything that everyone has said, and I really do appreciate that you all stuck it out through it as we have hit on many similar points. I especially appreciate the comments that Donna and Nick made about if, if you insist on moving forward, there are things that we want you to consider in the design. But before we get to that point, funding a design at this point seems premature. I understand the strategic plan is a four-year plan and it does go through, I believe, twenty thirty. However, at this point, my understanding is the road cannot be designed until the Brazos River Authority Bell House Drought Preparedness Project is complete. Even if they had a plan, anyone who's done construction knows there are unforeseen's. So they can make a plan for where that pipeline's gonna run through the easement. But the reality is, there will be conditions that make that detour. And my understanding is this road cannot go over top of the pipeline. So if this water pipeline is supposed to travel the same route as the proposed collector road, and they're not even taking bids until FY twenty eight Q one, which is September twenty twenty seven, why are we funding the design of a road that can't be designed until it is completed? So if you insist on moving forward, the proposed collector design funding vote should be placed on hold until no sooner than the date that the road, the pipeline is completed.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. The last one that signed up, uh, is Patricia, and I'm not gonna get this right. Vazdem, but I don't know if it's M E L U, Emmy. Emmy, okay, Demello.
Vazdemello.
Okay, there we go.
Hi, Patricia Vazdemello. I am the owner of the house and it turned down. Eight, eighteen zero three Teyon Court. Teyon Court. P J O N, left on south.
Ding ding. I'm sorry.
Okay. This was discussed a few years ago. I went to that meeting. Thank God it got turned down, moved over, renamed, whatever you want to call it. Um, it's really nice back there. It's, um, lots of deers, animals, children, they're safely running around, riding their bikes, walking their dogs, playing, screaming, shouting, safely, not injury, getting run over by cars. I was not ready to speak really, but after she said that, I have to come up here. I want these children to keep on riding their bikes, the students to walk to school, which my, my son finally, uh, graduated from Holy Trinity because of safety reasons in Belton High School. Thank God, thank, thank you, Lord. He's happy, going to become a priest, going to seminary. And he's been safe because he was walking to Belton High School until I moved him. It's very dangerous. Uh, we, we spoke about the thirty five and one fourteen. That's gonna be growing more with this. The traffic will be pushed also to our area. This bringing more danger, more crime. My husband, they're thirty-three years in the army, Apache pilot, now he's in Morocco. Till January, he was a BP, BPD. So I know that there are very low amounts of cars available to them to patrol and help us and Belton Police Department. They don't have enough officers. We can use that money to pay for more officers, more security, more cars, more admins to help them do their reports. Take care of them when they need it. take care of them when they need it. Um, this is gonna push a lot of bad compadres down our way because that's gonna be another way to run away from our wonderful officers. Um, I cut down as much as I can. I don't want to repeat anybody else, but please keep those officers in your prayers because this is not gonna help if it does come to fruition. Keep our kids in our prayers, keep our animals, keep our wildlife, keep our serenity. You live far enough from there, but it's still gonna affect you. Um, I don't know what else to say. It's just not a good idea, not a pretty situation. It's a pretty ugly situation. And that would be in my backyard. So um I don't think there's enough trees or big enough to cover that part of the fence or safety enough.
Right. All right, thank you very much. All right, that's all that I had signed up to speak. Um, we will close the floor and, and reopen. And one of the things, again, I'll, I'll address uh any public comments and public hearings. I, I don't know if it's more frustrating for you to share your concerns and ask questions and for us to look at you and say nothing, or if it's more, more frustrating for us to hear questions that we would like to answer and like to have a discussion and we can't. So again, realize this is not a, we're not, it's not deaf ears. Um, we all, I, I, I hate, I'm gonna speak for everybody because I think we are, we all think of it as if we were living there, right? So because we all live, we're, we're citizens just like you. And so we also understand that decisions are made on streets that we live in the community that we live. So again, just to understand that we're listening to what you're having to say. And so continue to be involved, continue to, to, to go to meetings, uh get involved, put, you know, go to Amy and sign up to be on a board or a commission. Uh, the more we have you involved in our process, the better off we are in making good decisions for the community. Uh, don't let community happen to you, let you happen to community, right? So anyway, I, I say that, so we're closing the, the, the floor. Um, and I'll open up for council uh discussion deliberation on the ordinance adopting the Belton Strategic Plan for fiscal year twenty-six to twenty thirty.
I'll start.
Yeah, for, since we shifted the public, on this agenda item, correct? Yeah, if you don't mind, name and address uh for the, at the mic. You'll have to say it again because it, we're, she's recording through the microphone.
Third, uh Susan Robinson, thirty-two zero seven Escalera Drive, beautiful Belton, Texas. Okay, um, talking about all the activity of people walking up and down, I would like to invite you to come over to my house. Um, from seven to eight every morning, I walk up, chip down Chisholm Trail, sometimes Uturia. And I go down that little trail, which we call the Bunny Trail or Deer Alley. You know, I think you really need to see all the activity of children and old people like me who are walking around in that neighborhood. I call that place um Mayberry West for a reason. And that road would really turn it into Raleigh, if you ever watch that show. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Seven to eight, I have a lot of kids going to school, so we'll see. I'll start. I think I only heard one name. I guess I'll, I guess I'll start first. So I just, I want you to as a council member and your, your neighbor, um, I do see you. I see you always. I, I understand. I hear them. I hear you. I even see all the personal attacks, but hey, I chose this for a reason. I'm thicker skinned than that. And you as a citizen have every right to say what you want to say. And I, I applaud you guys for standing up, speaking up uh and fighting for what you believe in. Um, so when I hear traffic, safety, environment, crosswalk path, and I, I mentioned this to a few of you at a meeting that I showed up to last week. I, if it were we, know any of those things at this point because it's conceptual. There's no design, there's no impact analysis, and no traffic analysis, none of that stuff. And so um that is kind of what this first dot, point, dot of the strategic plan is for this item. We, we have a very good relationship with our engineers. We trust our engineers. They do a very fantastic job for us. And I think that's a point that I, as a council member, not, not just a resident, would love to see. What would it look like? What's it gonna affect? And you want to know those answers too. Um, and like I've said before, we've, this, the design has been in the plan as the first bullet point for twenty years. There's no guarantee that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that design happens this year, next year. Um, there's probably other dominoes we're waiting on. And so this is not an immediate action. It's not like we're gonna run out uh to the industry tomorrow and say, hey, design us a road. We want it by Friday. Uh, just not gonna happen. Um, and I will tell you this, if the cost benefit, David, Mayor, Mayor talks about uh cost benefit a lot. If the cost benefit does not add up, I will tell you, I'll be the first one to vote no on it. If the cost benefit comes to us and engineer says, hey, this is good, this is a detriment, this is um, and, and so I, I, I give you that. A- and I know it's emotional. I've seen it tonight. I feel it. Um, I've been there. We've had a drunk driver who lived in Red Rock take out a car in our driveway. When you're seven, riding their bike and yells dad, car, like we taught him to do, but yet the Amazon truck still almost hits them when they're on the curb. So like, I feel those things and that that's my front yard. And I, granted, I do not live on the green belt. I do, or wherever the green belt will call it, I probably shouldn't have called that, but it's the dam. Yeah, it's your fence. I don't, I don't have that, but what I do have is where my kids ride their bike every day is the, is the big cut through street. And I'm not telling you that, hey, this has to happen personally. I can't speak for them. But from what I know of circulation and what we've seen in past instances and typical neighborhood mockups and things like that, this is a road that would have been there had we not been waiting on other entities. This would have been built out at construction. So I, I hear you guys on that. Asking to abst- I'll say this, I, I can abstain because this is, and I will tell you, my vote tonight, one way or the other, is not a specific vote to this one bullet point. This is a, a strategic plan that has a hundred and forty-seven bullet points. I've counted them out. I've read them all. And you're talking about things like design and plan, more ADA inclusive connectivity along trails and parks, uh advanced commercial retail recruitment development plans for I thirty-five, things that help your property tax when we can get more commercial property tax and things like that. And you're talking about a public safety center in South Belton, Miller Heights area. Um, we're talking about um planning for a future fire station in South Belton because of expansion. So I will tell you, my vote is not a specific vote to this one bullet point. This vote, we have a hundred and forty-six other plans that are in the works, and we've got to keep that rolling. That being said, much like any of us up here would, that cost benefit when it comes back, that's what speaks to us through facts, through here's what it looks like, here's what's taken out. And so I just want you guys to know that. I want you guys, I've read your emails. I'm always available, guys. That's my comments.
Thank you, Daniel. I, I've got a few comments, but at first I've got a couple of questions for staff. One, can you speak to the relationship between the potential design and potential construction of the Wheat Road Extension and the uh Bell House Pipeline Project?
Yeah, the uh, we, we certainly have been in discussions with the B R A about the pipeline. It uh, they're talking about twenty-nine thirty in terms of construction. The relationship, you know, there could be some relationship basically to uh the pipeline. The exact alignment and route has not been determined, but they certainly have approached us about the corridor uh and the possible placement of that in the corridor.
And we would be cognizant of where our pipeline is gonna be and where your road is gonna be.
Yes, yes, they certainly can be designed simultaneously uh in the same timeframe.
Uh, second question, as far as the cost of the design, we recently uh completed the design of the Conell Street Project, I think. Uh, and was that in the neighborhood of a million dollars?
The, this is a really rough estimate for the design. We've looked at a number of different options, uh not only that the corridor here, but also uh the potential, although it's outside the city limits, of an alignment along Sparta from Wheat Road back to Dunn's Canyon. Uh, we would like ultimately to have that connection to the school as a sidewalk. Um, that's uh, if you may not realize it, but the corridor of Sparta from Dunn's Canyon to Wheat Road is actually outside the city limits. And so a lot of coordination with Texas, I'm sorry, with the, with the county on that and how that might work. But that's a consideration in the ultimate design. We have not finalized a negotiation, a contract with anybody to do that. We've just had very preliminary discussions about pricing.
And, and when it comes to funding the design, uh would that item come back to us specifically to prove funding?
It would because of the, the price. It will exceed the amount and certainly would require council authorization on that.
Okay, thank you. Some more general comments. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who spoke tonight, uh everyone who sent emails. Um, uh, I, I, if, if I got an email, I read it. Um, and so I appreciate your comments. A- as Daniel kind of alluded to, the, the strategic plan encompasses way more than oh, we wrote design. Um, and so there's a, there's a lot of really good things that uh have not been part of the public discussion because this one item is a little more contentious. Um, and so I think that we've got a great plan for the city and for, for, for how to continue to improve lives of all citizens over the next three to five years. On the, on the comments that I've received, the emails I've received, the comments I've heard in the public, um, almost all comments and, and messages have been very thoughtful and respectful. I appreciate that. Um, i- it's a, it's a lot easier to, to read and interact and, and receive um words whenever they're, whenever they're thoughtful and respectful. And so that's uh kudos to, to everyone who participated in that. I appreciate that. Um, as with most issues that we consider as a council, there's two sides to every coin. Um, and I've, I've heard a number of people mention uh seventy property owners whose homes would back up to uh this corridor. Um, I've not heard anyone mention the hundred-plus property owners whose front yards face uh the streets that are currently being used as a cut through through the neighborhood. Um, I made a few phone calls this past week to, to people who live along those roads that uh that are being used as a cut through and said, hey, how do you feel about this? And um said, yeah, we'd love to have, we'd love to have a street over there so that people stop racing past our driveway. Um, and I said, why don't you uh make public comments? And they said, oh, no way. I would never say that. I don't want to be crucified in the public square. Uh, and so I, I understand that and I appreciate that. Um, and so all that to say, just that there's, there's two sides to every coin. Um, and so I think a- as we consider the design um and what the impacts of the, of a potential road would be, I think that we have to, we have to have the design to know what those, what those impacts are. Um, several folks made comments about trees. I'm, I'm a tree guy. I, I bought the house that I live in now because of the huge lava trees. Um, I spend more money protecting those trees um from potential oak wilt than I do on um most everything else I do to maintain my property. And so um, i- if we, if we get to the point of considering construction of a road, um, I want to make sure that legacy trees, heritage trees, to the fullest extent possible are protected. Um, that landscaping is something that looks good and adds value. Um, that pedestrian safety is considered where there's, where there's reasonable space and, and uh material for people to, to, to get around on foot or on bike safely. Um, and then just general vehicular safety, it needs to be something where there's uh controlled speed and um access points and intersections and all that kind of stuff. And that's all of that stuff in order to look at and, and accurately consider whether it's gonna be good or not, we've got to have the design. And so because of that, I think it's worth proceeding with looking at the design. And the first step of that is getting an estimate on what is the design gonna cost. Uh, and to echo what Daniel said and what Mayor Lee has mentioned several times is with everything, we look at the cost benefit analysis. And so that'll be something that we consider when it's time to fund design and every step along the way. So those are just, those are my thoughts and, and probably a scatterbrained order there, but.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Sam, I talked with Matt about this. I asked what the traffic impact analysis that, you know, it's, gosh, that, that goes back so far and then, and the design and, and all of that. I just certainly to work out the details, I mean, the, the, to get it down to the decimal points, you gotta have the design. But I do think it would be a, a wise thing for us to have the traffic impact analysis for this project. What's the, what's it gonna benefit? What, where is it, what pressures, where is it gonna take pressure off? Um, that may drive some design things as we, as we get into that. So do we need to reword one point three point three or what, what do we need to do to say, we'd like to have, just take a, sharpen their pencils and take a, and, and update this thing for us before we go any further?
The uh, certainly, the design consideration certainly could include a T I A traffic impact analysis. I think that's uh, I don't know that you do the, the T I A absent of the overall look at the design.
Right, so it's chicken and egg.
Seems like it's an incorporated design consideration. I think a lot of the questions that have been raised, a lot of the issues, um, you know, certainly uh tree considerations, uh drainage, um.
Sure.
Donna made a number of comments about things that need to be addressed uh in a feasibility analysis as a part of this. And I think that's, that's probably the first step as a part of going forward. Um, whether that's the, the broader um engineering design consideration itself or uh feasibility, uh certainly tr- routing of traffic, uh traffic safety, the enhancement, you know, for police and fire vehicles, getting to neighbors.
Sure. And the whole most, 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 most aspect of it as well with
Right.
the kids and the electric bikes and all that.
And the additional um trails and sidewalks that would be provided as a part of it.
Yep.
A design concept, if, if we had um a, an example of what it would look like, it might help as well. So perhaps feasibility is the first part of that that could involve traffic analysis as well.
Sam, I'm gonna speak real quick just to engineering for you. Many of y'all have been involved with that, but also just for those in the audience, but you have milestones that occur during design. Typically, that's thirty, sixteen, ninety percent design, and then ultimately a hundred percent. That much of what we've talked about tonight is thirty percent. And when you start talking about cost benefit and you start talking about impacts environmentally, you're gonna catch that at that thirty percent mark typically. And so just want to kind of give at least a little bit of a backstop to some of the concerns that council may have, but also those in the audience that you're not spending through a million dollars if there's a ma- major red flag early on. You're gonna, you're gonna stop at not the, at the thirty percent. You're gonna say, hey, hold on a second, let us recruit. You're gonna talk about it, and then you could decide whether you want to proceed on to the sixty, the ninety, and the hundred. So just to, just more education on the engineering process play and that you've at least got some backstops built in to, to that.
Yeah, I'll, um, I don't think we can take. Um, just a couple of quick comments, just to, I echo what all my colleagues have said here and I really appreciate everyone coming out and sharing your concerns. We hear them. We do hear them. Um, we feel them. Um, I live on Dunn's Canyon and that used to be a tiny little one-lane country road. Um, we used to love a really beautiful, beautiful landscape and pastures of trees. Well, we see Dawson Ranch and Red Rock now. So um change is so hard and growth is hard and all that comes with it is so difficult. Um, so uh, you know, backing out onto Dunn's Canyon every day is very difficult. I've had my mailbox blown up twice. But I cannot imagine what our community would be like if we didn't enhance Dunn's Canyon and what that would be like for our students and our kids walking and skating. And I watch them every day and my word, the amount of traffic with the schools. So um, I'm glad that that road was enhanced and widened and I hope that, I believe that that serves us well. So all that to say that I support moving forward as far as just paying attention to our thoroughfare plan, understanding the concerns and what, how, how our neighborhoods have changed since this discussion began. That is worthy, worthy conversation we should be having. Um, I think the thing that was I think anything that was brought up concerns tonight is something that would be considered and can, and concerned uh, as we move forward with any kind of discussion about a road, anywhere other than just Wheat Road. It's just, it's difficult, so we hear you, and I'm, thank you for sharing with us and giving us the opportunity to, to, to listen, and then to take back and, and to make adjustments.
Yeah, um, yeah, public comments are, are done, we're in our deliberation stage, so again, thank you for always. No, no, it's, I'm sorry, sorry. No, sir, I'm, I'm sorry. No. I, we.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, and we understand, again, we, this, I know it's frustrating, um, to, to deal with the process that we deal with. So, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to say a little something, um. I really appreciate everyone getting involved, because I have just as many concerns as y'all do. You know, one of the big ones for me is, uh, the Lake Road intersection that one person spoke about. Um, I, I just, I don't know how that's gonna work, and um, also, I lived in ones that had really bad drainage, and it was horrible, so the drainage, I appreciate you bringing that up, that's a really important aspect of this. Um, the safety aspect, I, I guarantee you if it comes back, that this will hurt the safety of any citizen, this will not move forward. And so that, that is a big concern of, I know of all of us. But I will say, kind of one thing Dave said, I have had close to just as many people write me in favor of this as I have against it, because we do have knowledge that there are people, again, we're at the very high, we don't know the details yet, but we foresee that there will be people who are hurt by this, and there will also be people that are helped by this. Um, because that traffic, it's already there. And right now, that high level of traffic is going on local roads that were never meant to hold that type of traffic. And, um, and it's on front facing houses, whereas like y'all have mentioned, kids are out playing. You know, anyone on Twin Ridge or Mystic Mountain, uh, it's, they worry about their kids when they go in the front yard. And, um, so I, I will say again, I'll echo Dave, there are two sides to this, um. But I really hate that y'all have to keep coming back to fight this, as several of you have said. There does need to be a final answer of either yes or no on this. Uh, I want to be able to vote on this, but we I personally am an analytical person, and I want all the data in front of me before I make a decision. And so I do want to move forward with doing all the different analysis, getting the information, because I think all of us do, because we want to say, is this it, or is it a hindrance? And right now, we cannot honestly say that one way or the other, because we just don't have the data. But I do, I want to make sure everyone in here that has spoken, we do hear you and see the concerns, and we have concerns, and that's why we want answers to those questions.
Right.
With that being said, can I ask a couple of questions about the item itself?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
So what we're voting on tonight? To get back to what we're actually voting on, the strategic plan. We are not voting on this Wheat Road project, yea or nay. This is part of the thoroughfare plan as it stands, which we are going to be reviewing, asking for these analyses as that even proceeds to any sort of next step, i- is that an, a correct understanding?
The, the strategic plan includes an item on the Wheat Road project, it's a local collector's street, and it, it is included in, as a design component. Again, not a rush job, it's twenty six, twenty seven, basically is what we're about in terms of design, and so I have to scope that project, we have to go through the, first of all, the amendment to the thoroughfare plan, that's, that's directed in the strategic plan, so that's the first step, that'll take three months, basically, to go P and Z and council to do that, and any other streets that might come up, if we do it in isolation, or if we bring others forward. So the plan basically acknowledges the change from an arterial to a collector's street, and provides some funding for beginning the analysis, basically, that's, that's.
Analysis.
Right, beginning the analysis, it's not funding the project, it's not a final, a final commitment to the project, but it is certainly acknowledging that, uh, that project has been in our plan for years, it certainly merits the change to a collector's street status, and, um, provides for some initial funding to start some of this, this analysis that's.
Where we can then incorporate what we've heard tonight, and as we move forward, we'll be able to again, take these comments, incorporate into the discussion and the analysis, and I'm just, I'm trying to make sure, Dan, that, that's what this tonight means.
That's right.
Well, and further into that, almost every single thing in the strategic plan requires further action.
Right.
And not only the advisability of it, the budget process, so many different ways. N- nothing's being funded at this time.
No, just making sure that, that really for the benefit of all here, understand that.
Sure.
Right. Yeah, and my comments on the strategic plan, I think, uh, we started, uh, having strategic plans, uh, late nine, early two thousands, and, um, um, Mayor Holmes, Bill Holmes, John Holmes' father was one of those that, that brought that, and so we as Belton are better because we started strategic planning, because we're thinking three, five, ten years ahead, instead of just, uh, what, what's going on. I will also say that some things, um, have changed over the years, and so our, our plans have changed, just like anybody's strategic plan or retirement plan. Uh, things change, uh, different inputs. Uh, neighborhoods in transition are always the most difficult, so those people who uh, lived in Belton when there was no Loop One Twenty One, when Lake Road was a little bitty road, and there were chain link fences with small houses up and down Lake Road, and there was no commercial, and there was no high school, uh, uh, out there, high school was downtown. And so when the high school built out there, things changed, when Red Rock came in, uh, things changed. And so ob- obviously, we are a living, breathing community, uh, that's made up of the organisms of the citizens, and so we are all part of it. So I will say, whatever the item is on this, from, uh, South Belton, um, um, working with the school district as we purchased that, uh, the Miller Heights School, start to make that, uh, from that to plans for Sixth Avenue, as we start looking at maybe burying some uh, electric lines and, and having better sidewalks along that, all of those things are subject to uh, to review, they're subject to public meetings, they go through boards and commissions as we go through that, and we look at the implications of zoning changes, all of that. And so this is just one step, it's a general scope. Uh, as an engineer, I will say this, um, we, we, we want to have the right answer, not our answer. So because we did this twenty years ago does not mean it's the right answer, because it was in the budget is not the right answer. The right answer is the right answer. And so, uh, being able to ask the questions, and honestly, having citizens to be able to say, I'm for it or against it, and ha- and feel free that they can say that in a community, makes Belton a good community, when we can, when we can sometimes be a six one to vote, vote on council, and we still like each other. And so I think this is just part of the process, and you guys are part of the process, we appreciate you guys being part of the process. I will say this, for those who talked about beer and, and roads and, and walking and all that stuff. I, I've got a, a, a dead two fawns, uh, twins, uh, and, and so, uh, she and a couple of other does have been raising those in our yard, uh, right there between Second and M L K on Loop One Twenty One. And I, on occasion, shoo them back away from Loop One Twenty One, because we start hitting the winter months, and I see them dead in the road. And it frustrates me, but, uh, the good thing is, I'm trying to keep the green space as much as I can, so I for you on, on the greens and ha- and having big oak trees. Also, if you know Loop One Twenty One, uh, there's a couple of oak trees and elm trees that Tech Dot did not mow down when they widened Loop One Twenty One, because I sat out there and I had discussions with them, and you're not moving these trees, and they didn't, because they didn't, they couldn't quote chapter and verse, so being involved and pushing back on or, on organizations is okay. Uh, but if I were to do that in a negative way, they would have just done it. And so we have to work on being able to communicate our message. As far as walking and jogging on, on the roads, I've done them all. Um, I've trained for marathons, I've run every road in this town, and I will say some of the most dangerous places I've ever run is down Wheat Road, and then up Sparta Road over to Dunn's Canyon, and trying to go up that blind zigzag up there when there are no sidewalks. Uh, twenty years ago, we didn't have sidewalks. When the Mystic Mountain started, I think it didn't have sidewalk requirements, but when Chisholm Trail came in, it did have sidewalk requirements. So we as a council saw that that was important, and we've put sidewalks in the, in the ordinance, and so now developers need to do that to help protect. So again, we, we live, we breathe, we change, we move, hopefully positively, sometimes negative, but we get over it, and so we'll continue to work with you guys, thank you guys for that. But again, like was stated, I didn't count them all, but there's a hundred plus items on here. I will say, and I, I don't want, I don't know the number, um, but probably thirty to eighty percent have significant progress towards them by the end of the strategic plan, if not accomplished, but never a hundred percent of the items, and they rarely end up exactly the way we wanted, or what we thought they would be when we, because we start the engineering analysis, we start looking at the cost, and we realize we just really can't do that now, or it's not really the benefit we thought it might be. So again, thanks for being part of the process. That being said, I think everybody said their piece, and I think, uh, John is now at the Grand Ole Opry, uh, enjoying whoever's performing this evening. I doubt Taylor Swift is there, but who knows?
It may be John.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. All right, so, um, the petition in, in a motion, adopting the ordinance, uh, for the Belton Strategic Plan twenty six thirty.
Uh, move to adopt Belton's Strategic Plan for F Y twenty six to thirty.
Second. Motion, second, to adopt a Belton Strategic Plan for twenty six to thirty, any other discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, passes six to zero with one absent. Thank you guys for being here, wish you would have brought the snacks. Almost close to my bedtime, so have a good evening. Um, I'm gonna be in Austin tomorrow, but, but I will tell you this, if you can keep pace with me, I'll keep pace with you.